Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator comptroller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator comptroller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good evening for our evening event, our evening board meeting. Welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners for Thursday, May 9th. Call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk Assistant, will you call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the attendance, Commissioner Skaggs.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Bukowski.
Present.
Tallon.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Melton.
Present.
Sparks.
Present.
Saulfeld.
Breevy.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Ponstein.
Here.
Vice Chair Steck.
Present.
Jones.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Bonk.
Here.
And Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, 18 present and one absent.
Thank you so much. I'll call in Commissioner Ponstein for the invocation.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Let us pray. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered. Laws are enacted and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude for the government leaders of the United States, state of Michigan, and Kent County. May they always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Grant that they may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our state and county with honesty and integrity. We ask this through you, Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. All right. We are on item five, Special Order of Business. And I want to just kind of talk about this a little bit. We're going to have Wayman come up and explain the Public Service Recognition Week. But we have some awesome, awesome county staff, and we want to recognize them. And Wayman? Can you go up and...
The Public Service Recognition Week is an annual recognition week where we honor our employees and provide an opportunity to recognize and honor the men and women who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. Additionally, Public Service Recognition Week allows us to pause and reflect on the myriad challenges we face together and the successes we've had over the past year, with a common goal of improving the quality of life in Kent County. Our efforts culminate this week during the Excellence in Action Awards that will be celebrated tonight. And our commissioners who are here today are very much a part of that. I want to thank Chair Bolter and all of you for recognizing how important this event is. We had a celebration this afternoon before we got here, reception. And I really just want to thank you all for your support and look forward to a really great opportunity to learn how our employees, how our staff are making Kent County to be the best place ever to work and play.
Evening, everyone. We're going to start tonight with the Excellence in Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Award, and that goes to the Sheriff's Office.
It's truly a great honor. Obviously, every day we try to strive and make efforts in every arena at the Sheriff's Office. We've made an intentional focus on this particular topic, diversity, equity, and inclusion.
And it's something we really have to be very focused on. And if we're not, we won't be serving the community in the way that we need to. So this has to be all hands on deck. Everybody has to understand the need for recruiting good, solid, moral compass people and understanding that diversity and inclusion is critical to our success.
We need to build bridges with all members of our community. There's, I think, those right now that feel that they're disenfranchised, that their voices are not being heard. And for us to build those bridges and allow for them to speak their mind, for us to learn more about them and their cultures are going to speak loudly for what we are able to accomplish in the future.
We just want people to understand what a completely rewarding career path this is and how necessary it is to have people of every corner of our community participate in it. Every group, everybody that needs to be represented at the table for policymaking decisions needs to have a voice at the table when we're discussing them. And that can only happen through developing those resources in our community. So we've really focused our efforts on developing talent and having people become interesting and serving, and also interested in taking on leadership roles after they've come to the Sheriff's Office and worked here for a while. So we're very honored to be accepting this award for that work.
So I'd like to read a proclamation, if we could. Thank you for coming up. Whereas this week, May 5 through 11, 2019, is recognized nationally as Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas we, the Board of Commissioners, celebrate the hard work of more than 1,700 Kent County employees. And whereas the performance management program seeks to identify excellent inaction through programs and services that advance a culture that demonstrates diversity, equity, and inclusion through active engagement of removing barriers for underrepresented populations in the county or county workplace. And whereas the county recognizes the advancement of a culture that demonstrates diversity, equity, and inclusion, and through active engagement removes barriers for underrepresented populations in the county or county workplace. And whereas the Sheriff's Office acted to become more intentional and specific about development efforts for leadership personnel. And whereas this has given rise to a dedicated, well-prepared, and increasingly diverse leadership staff, and ultimately results in improved decision-making and enhanced delivery of service to our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the Kent County Sheriff's Office with the Excellence in Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Award for the intentionality of developing a diverse leadership staff. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Evening. It is my pleasure to recognize the Excellence in Innovation Award. And we have two recipients, that's why I get to carry two of these, Information Technology and the Drain Commissioner.
You would see filing cabinet, a bookcase here, another bookcase there, and then this hole from the window all the way across to the other side would have just been nothing but filing cabinets. It was chaos.
We had run out of room for file cabinets. And we were gaining probably about two file cabinets full a year. And when you have no more room for file cabinets, you're in trouble.
They were written in pencil, and they were so fragile that when you would turn the page, the page would crack, the paper would be so old, it would just crumble.
It was very collaborative, yes. Very searchable. One of the steps we asked them to do is to identify what kind of different documents they are in their file cabinets. And then we asked them to say, how would you want to retrieve those? What kind of keyword information would you want to bring those back into, like a drain name, or a date, or something like that?
Now, everyone has a logical way of looking at the paper and getting to them at the same time. They can email them to engineers or other, they can share the documents with other people very easily. There's so many advantages.
Thank you for, the Board of Commissioners, for just providing the opportunity to recognize us and what we do for the community.
All right, let me read a proclamation from the Board of Commissioners. Whereas this week, May 5 through 11, 2019, is recognized nationally as Public Service Recognition Week. And whereas we, the Board of Commissioners, celebrate the hard work of the more than 1,700 Kent County employees. And whereas the performance management program seeks to identify excellence in action through programs and services that are innovative. And whereas the specialty apps team implemented an OnBase solution at the Drain Commissioners' office designed to reduce their paper footprint. And whereas existing historical paper documents were scanned by a third-party vendor imported into OnBase. And whereas because of this project, they were able to reclaim a room that was once filled with file cabinets. And whereas they are looking at making the images on OnBase available to mobile devices and further data integration with GIS. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims that the Information Technology Department and the Drain Commissioner are recognized with the Excellence in Innovation Award for the OnBase solution. Congratulations. Above us is one of our two 10-ton cranes that are used to facilitate moving the waste up into the boiler feed chute.
The award that we've won is for the collaboration efforts between the Kent County Department of Public Works and the local law enforcement agencies and groups that would bring waste here for destruction.
Pills, evidence, documentation control. So this program is a critical one for us and our community at this time because drug abuse is so prevalent, opioid crisis, there are so many medications that people have in their cupboards that they may not use anymore, they may have inherited, that we don't want to get into the wrong place.
The way the operation works is a law enforcement agency will request an appointment, and through the communications, we'll set up a time and a date when the agency brings the material to the site. It's weighed in, and during the process, someone will meet them and escort them to the appropriate areas in the boiler house.
Those agents would come up here and bring that material directly to the feed chute, and it's through there that they would see it disappear into the fire below.
We look at this program, we're very proud of the program of this facility and all of the facilities that we operate on a daily basis. But to be recognized for something that you're so proud of is a really awesome feeling. So it's something that will help to motivate us to continue on the good work and to share more of the successes that we see in this program and also other programs that we're operating.
I'm honored tonight to give this collaborate. Talk trash, now you got to see a lot of our business that we take care of each month. This is Excellence in Collaboration Award, Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works provided special waste destruction, including secure and witness destruction of illicit drugs, evidence, confidential documents, medical records, and prescription and over-the-counter medications. And the Department of Public Works destroyed nearly 240,000 pounds of these materials received from 78 local state, federal government, and law enforcement agencies. Efforts of the Department of Public Works assisted law enforcement to safely and completely obliterate these materials. And the county's collaborative efforts have also been recognized nationally as a best practice model due to our state-of-the-art waste management protocols, long-range planning, efficiency, and leadership in waste industry. Therefore, be resolved that Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the Kent County Department of Public Works is recognized with the Excellence in Collaboration Award for collaboration with law enforcement agencies and destruction of illicit drugs on the...
One of the responsibilities of this office is to collect what is known by various names, the lodging tax, hotel motel tax, which is a tax imposed on the folks who provide hotel rooms, essentially. In recent years, however, it's gone even a step further with organizations like Airbnb and several similar ones, where it's not obvious that somebody is renting out their room to transient guests on a one-night, two-night, five-night basis. It's become much more common and prominent throughout the country for those governmental units that do levy a lodging tax to work directly with Airbnb. So that's what we did. So Airbnb collects the money directly as part of the payment for the room, and then once a month, they accumulate all of those funds that they collected on our behalf and submit them to us with a report of the gross revenues. Tax began being levied on August 1st of last year, 2018. We're just shy of $130,000 already in eight months. It's first and foremost a fairness issue, but $100,000 or $200,000 a year is not chump change either. And with the demands that we have on the lodging tax revenue to support convention center and arena and other activities that help drive more people to stay in hotels and motels and Airbnbs, it's an important thing.
It is my pleasure to award the Excellence in Community Impact Award to the Treasurer's Office. I will follow and read the proclamation. Whereas this week, May 5 through 11, 2019, is recognized nationally as Public Service Recognition Week. And whereas we, the Board of Commissioners, celebrate the hard work of the more than 1,700 Kent County employees. And the performance management program seeks to impact the community through advancement of excellence in residents' lives, economic opportunities, health, and safety through the caring contribution of county initiatives and services to our community. And the Kent County Treasurer's Office lodging tax collection activity has increased with the advent of new hotels and home rentals. The Kent County Treasurer's Office became aware of the opportunity to collect tax revenue from Airbnb for overnight lodging. And, working in cooperation with Airbnb, the Kent County Treasurer's Office negotiated and completed a lodging tax agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the Kent County Treasurer's Office is recognized with the Excellence in Action Community Impact Award for its foresight to collect lodging taxes from Airbnb.
You're not getting rid of me that easily. I see I have 10 minutes on the clock. No. I would like to introduce to you my chief deputy, Steve Orchard. Steve is actually the senior member of our department. He started five months before I did, will be completing his 23rd year in August. He's been my chief deputy for 16 years, and he is the quintessential chief deputy to an elected official. He avoids the spotlight, as evidenced by the stellar remarks that he didn't give up there. But he does a fabulous job every day and makes me look really, really good. So Steve is the one who did the legwork on this, chased down Airbnb, communicated with them for months, and got the deal done. So I just wanted you to be aware of the person who really did the work, even though he hates to be standing here right at this moment, but he deserves this recognition. So thank you.
I'm last, promise. Yay, you can clap for that. Let's clap for that. All right. So apparently, the chair gets to pick someone to recognize. And if I start reading the remarks they gave me, you'll know right away who it is. But I want to say that it is someone in our county who I, unfortunately for him, have to call about once a week to be the fixer. And he's awesome, and I'm so thankful that he answers my phone call, and I'm so thankful that he's always responsive. He's also somebody that last week, when I had a concern that he probably shouldn't have had to deal with as the director, he just said, "Send them to me. I will take care of it. I want to be sure that we are doing everything we need to do." So with that, now I will let you know kind of what they want me to say. You don't, I don't know about how many of you noticed this, but when you get an email from the Health Department staff, there's a little button or logo at the bottom which reads PHAB, Accredited Health Department. What you also didn't probably know is that our Health Department is only one of seven in the state that has this accreditation, and only 218 local health departments in the country that has this accreditation. So that means we're ready to do improvements, improve management, develop leaders, improve relationships in the community. It's just another, it's kind of like the AAA bond rating. It's a little gold seal that shows that we are serving our county well. So it's no wonder that with emerging health issues like vapor intrusion, Asian flu, the measles or PFOS, we are prepared because of that. And mainly because of this person, in my opinion. I also, it's not on here, but I also want to give a shout-out to him for taking care of a lot of our lead issues recently. And one issue you know is near and dear to me, my weekly dog calls. So with that, I want to call up Adam London for this award. And we don't have a video because it was supposed to be a surprise, so...
It is.
We'll get you a video, maybe next year, we'll see. So I'm going to read this. It's long and boring, sorry. Whereas this week, May 5 through the 11th, 2019, is recognized nationally as Public Service Recognition Week, we, the Board of Commissioners, celebrate the hard work of the more than 1,700 county employees. The performance management program seeks to impact the community through advancement of excellence in residents' lives, economic opportunities, health, and safety through the caring contribution of county initiatives and services to our community. During the past two years, the Kent County Health Department has repeatedly responded to concerns about PFOS in Belma and other areas of the county, including my district, local landfills, and airports. The health officer, medical director, epidemiologist, and other key staff have pulled together to become experts regarding PFOS, even though that's not their job, that's not in here. But they have really become kind of the liaison to the community and really taken on a role sometimes that's not even in their scope, just to make sure that people know what's happening in their community. The health officer and communications staff have worked diligently to provide accurate information to our residents in a straightforward, understandable manner to ensure transparency of information and credibility of local government. The fiscal staff created systems to document the hundreds of hours county staff have spent on these local responses to ensure proper state reimbursement. Very important. And I, Mandy Bolter, as the chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim that Kent County Health Department is recognized with Excellence in Action Chairperson's Award for the state and community leadership regarding the PFOS response. And here you go.
Yeah, I do, just for a moment, because I am speechless, I'm going to say a few words. But thank you. And I'm not worthy of this, and I mean that sincerely, because I have been blessed with the most amazing team at the Kent County Health Department. And the people of this community should know that that department is full of servants who love and care about this community so much. And it's been the honor of my life to be their captain for the past handful of years. And not just there at that department, but in all the other departments, the people behind me, Wayman Britt sitting right there as our captain. The people of this community are really true. The people of this community are really truly blessed to have the employees that we have and all of you representing them. It's been a pleasure to work with them and to work with all of you. So I've got nothing else to say, but thank you. This is a huge surprise. Thank you.
All right, here we go. We are on to item 5B, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Update by Darius Quinn. Darius, do you want to come up?
So I'm a little shorter, so I'm going to have to adjust the microphone here. I want to start out by saying good evening and congratulations to all of the award recipients and specifically to the Sheriff's Office because your award actually rolls right into this evening's presentation. I had the opportunity to present a similar presentation to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. They convened a group of local counties and cities from across the state of Michigan. Last week, Wayman, Theresa, and myself went over and I just want you to know that Kent County is also known and looked to as a leader in this area as well. So what I'd like to do is just walk you through real quick. Chair, I got your note, 10 minutes and counting here. But before, but, no, but before, and so I make sure that I don't lose sight of those individuals who really helped carry the water on this. I'd like to ask for members of the Cultural Insight Council that are here today just to stand to be acknowledged because without you, we could not do this work. So thank you. So with that, we'll move into the presentation here. I share this slide with individuals, not because of the handsome gentleman on the slide there, but I like folks to know that Wayman certainly is our county administrator. But I also want to emphasize the organizational structure that we have here at Kent County. We have a relatively unique organizational structure, some would even say difficult, but the power of collaboration really allows us to get the work done. So thanks to our many elected officials and also the judiciary for allowing us to have some influence in how we get the work done. For those of you who are relatively new to the board, I'd like to just start with a ground up approach and maybe walk you through how we arrived to where we're at today. And really this work began on a formal basis back in 2000, the year 2000, when Kent County was probably in the news for things that we're not in the news for today, right? We are in the news now because we are known as a leader in so many different areas, our spirit of collaboration, et cetera. So there were some things taking place and some of you were here, some things that were taking place that we weren't so necessarily proud of. So we assembled a team at the time and that was to take a look at the employment practices and our purchasing practices. And what we walked away from was that there was a steady commitment that the county had and we recognized there was room for improvement. So in 2001, we formed the Cultural Insight Council to really help guide us in these areas. And I'd like to point your attention to the bottom of this slide here and really what we began is walking through these various phases where we, first, our hearts were in the right places, so we knew we needed to do something and I like to call that we were doing diversity stuff at the time, right? A lot of cultural celebrations, activities, and again, our hearts were in the right places and we knew we needed to do something. And then we moved to the next phase where we began to aligning our work with a purpose, right? And then taking us to where we are today where there is more strategic alignment and today's awards and the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion is an example of that. 2016, 15 years after our formal effort, we entered into an agreement with the Cultural Intelligence Center and went into a strategic planning mode that had marked the 15-year anniversary of the CIC and the county's diversity effort. So we wanted to hit the reset button, so we began working with the Cultural Intelligence Center and just a real quick look at what that strategic planning process looked like, several meetings with members of county leadership, community stakeholder input. In fact, members, we had over 14 organizations who came together right here in this very room representing a diverse group from Native American groups to women's groups to African American groups and they met without anyone from the county present. And they provided us with their, with some honest feedback as to how Kent County was perceived. So we took that information as well as other sources of information, countywide survey and so on. And we began to filter that information through these five different lenses. Leadership Commitment, Access and Equity, Multicultural, Inclusive, Organizational, Climate, Learning and Diversity, and Community Engagement and Partnerships. And then that's how we arose to these three key priorities. One is to improve our leadership capability surrounding diversity, equity, and inclusion, our organizational culture, and then accountability. A few key outcomes from that work was that we changed our mission statement, the county's diversity work, to a more action-oriented mission statement. You'll see down on the third bullet, we began formally reporting back to the County Board of Commissioners to increase accountability so that you are aware of what we're involved in. Hundreds of county staff were trained in cultural intelligence. And another key outcome is that we adopted an equity framework, right? Many of you have seen these slides that really speaks to the importance of reducing barriers and increasing access to county services. So we've challenged every department here to continue to think about ways that they can help to reduce barriers for underrepresented individuals and to increase access to services so that we make sure that we're serving all members of our community. Real quick, in terms of how we are engaging in the equity work, we're having conversations with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights and also GARE, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, so that we make sure that we're carefully walking into this work and we completely understand what that looks like. A few other key outcomes, we adopted the Cultural Intelligence Model, which is really our framework for engaging in diversity. Some of the companies who use cultural intelligence just so you have a framework. And you'll notice that this began in 2017 when we had a meeting over at DeVos Place with county leaders where we kicked it off. If you're not familiar with the Cultural Intelligence Model, really quick, this is an individual assessment that examines your own individual drive, right? So why do you engage in the work? It measures your knowledge, how well you incorporate strategy and action into your game plan. So this is the model that we've adopted. And real quick, I'd just like to share with you some of the things that we've done as a result of this strategic plan. We've had training again for over 1,200 individuals. We have 12 individuals who are culturally, who are trained in the cultural intelligence work, who have gone through to various departments and again, trained over 1,200 individuals. Board of Commissioner engagement, I really appreciate the fact that we now have more of you attending many of our community engagement initiatives. What we're working on right now, again, continuing our training efforts internally so everybody's on the same page. And then some of the things that we're working on, community engagement and partnerships. So again, thank you for those of you who are able to get out into the community, hear the community, and bring back feedback so that we can adjust our services. So what's next? Just a couple of slides here. We're taking a look at all of our county policies and making sure that they are equitable and continuing our training efforts and then hitting the reset button on these efforts. I wanted to just really quickly provide you with some key statistics in terms of our diversity report. I know many of you are near and dear to the veterans' community. Our data is as of 2018, but again, you've seen this, 87 military veterans were employed at the time representing roughly 5.5% of our workforce. Just so that you're aware and have a high level overview of the workforce that you employ here, we have roughly 20% of our workforce is represented by those of ethnic minorities. 52% of our workforce is female. And just a couple of key stats in terms of 2019, our new hires, we've had 47 new hires to date with 57% of those being female and roughly 18% of those being ethnic minorities. And the promotion story is pretty consistent as well. So with that, Madam Chair, I have one minute left. Are there any questions that anyone has? And again, I just really want to thank you for your.
That was awesome.
Ongoing and continued support.
Awesome.
So thank you.
And you know, it's, I said this in my speech last week, I think people don't really always know what we do at the county and I think this is, you know, one example of we need to continue to push this out into the community because it is such good work that you are doing and that you've done and so thank you. Questions? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Darius. I was just wondering, it seems like the one area we may be lacking a little bit is law enforcement. And I was wondering what is being done to recruit and hire minorities for our Sheriff's Department?
It's a great question and I certainly don't want to speak for the sheriff, but it's very ironic, her and I just exchanged emails yesterday. She's continuously seeking input and strategies as it relates to recruiting ethnic minorities. But I'll tell you, in the 20 years that I've been here, that's always been a challenge. Number one, we have a pipeline challenge, meaning that, and I don't mean to stereotype or overgeneralize, you won't find an overwhelming number of ethnic minorities going into the criminal justice or law enforcement field. Coupled with number two, if you do have ethnic minorities who are in the criminal justice field, most of them have employment offers by the time they leave the academy, right? We've had conversations with Grand Rapids Public Schools over the years about continuing to get in at the K through 12 level. But I'll tell you, Sheriff Young has really ramped up the efforts and, but that in short has really been a problem for us. And when we had the airport, it was kind of the same thing with field maintenance, you know, not just a lot of folks going into those occupants.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, good job, Mr. Quinn, once again. And I would like to say when it comes to law enforcement, it will take a great call to community leaders to also talk to the youth about changing their perception of law enforcement so more will want to apply for those jobs. Because definitely the Sheriff's Department has been reaching out and I was in a great meeting with our administrator and others in the Sheriff's Department, the sheriff, to talk about some of that in the 4907, 4908 zip codes. So keep up the good work and last time you came, your department was doing such a great job and you've done even better this year. So you're kind of raising the bar for yourself as you go along. So what are, what are some of the goals that you have for the upcoming year or the next 12 or 24 months? But good job.
Thank you. And just one comment, as it relates to the law enforcement community, I've shared this, I guess we're formal now, with Prosecutor Becker and also with the sheriff. They really frame their work in a way that minority communities can better accept their message. Number one, the prosecutor has generally not been very welcomed and received in communities of color, but Chris approaches it from a standpoint that everyone, every victim needs an advocate, right? And from that standpoint, which one of us wouldn't want our loved ones who has been a victim to have an advocate, right? The sheriff frames her conversation as that we're community guardians, right? Who doesn't want a community guardian, right? So if we can begin to look at the work in a more positive light, I think they've both done a really good job at that and I just want to encourage them to continue on. And Commissioner Womack, I'm not sure if there's a question in there or not.
Yeah, just what are some of your goals for the next 12, 24 months and keep up the good work?
Thank you. And really, just to continue to collaborate internally because HR, our business is employment internally and I report in this work through the county administrator's office, but we can't get any of it done without the folks who are delivering the services. So work better with these folks behind us. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Darius, for all the great work. I was privileged to be able to be at that initial CQ kickoff in 2017 and that's really good stuff and great to see that continuing to happen around the county. I was struck in the third slide about kind of the initial conversation in 2001, that one of the pieces was taking a look at our purchasing practices. And I just wanted to ask whether, whether we're doing anything with that anymore or whether we did, just kind of an update on the status of that or whether that's something that we need to start taking a little more look at.
So I don't want to throw my boss under the bus, but I'd have to say that I'd have to have more conversation with Wayman about it. Obviously, working in human resources, we're responsible for that HR function, so I'll add it to our agenda.
Yeah, I'd just comment briefly, Cal and his team have done a marvelous job working with our departments and the community. I think they're well thought of, they're one of the best practices. So, but I think we all know that we can do better in every department, so we will take your comments back and maybe give you an update.
It'd be great to hear you all doing it. Thank you.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair, but Commissioner Talon took the words out of my mouth. That was my question, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Darius tonight? All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, on to item six, pursuant to our new rules, this first public comment is related to agenda items only. Any member of the public wishing to speak on our current agenda? All right, seeing none. On to item seven, Consent Agenda, call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair, I move the consent agenda, which is minutes of the April 25th meeting, finance minutes, and resolution 39.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Ponstein, support by Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
On the consent agenda, Commissioner Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Saulfeld. Brevi.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
And Chair Bolter.
Yes.
And I'm sure you have 18 yays, zero nays. The consent agenda is passed.
Thank you so much. All right, we will move on to item eight, Resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move resolution 40, it's from the Board of Commissioners and it's the authorization of December 2019 general operating tax levy.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Brevi. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Ponstein.
Just a quick comment, I noticed in the finance minutes that Commissioner Morgan asked the question about when the taxes are collected. It used to be the winter, now it's the summer. Just want to remind everyone that change occurred when we helped the state bail out their mess.
On record, in the minutes. Noted. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Mr. McCumber, please call the roll.
On resolution number 40, Commissioner Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Saulfeld. Brevi.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
And I'm sure you have 18 yays, zero nays. The resolution is passed.
Thank you so much. On to Resolutions, item B, I'll call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move resolution number 41 of today's date. It's an authorization to submit the Community Corrections Comprehensive Plan and the Grant Application from Community Corrections.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees.
Second.
Supported by Commissioner Skaggs. Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, this, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. I don't think a program is mentioned here and I don't know if Prosecutor Becker or who could speak to this, but I wonder if we have any idea or thoughts about where this, where this funding will be going.
It's my job for the day, I'm doing the Riverbank on Saturday.
Can you introduce yourself again?
Sure. My name's Andy Verheek, I'm one of the planners with the Kent County Office of Community Corrections, so. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought the repeat would happen. So the money that we get from the state of Michigan funds a variety of programs in Kent County. They range from pre-trial programming here for Kent County, providing some money for housing OUAL third offenders at the Kent County Correctional Facility, cognitive behavioral treatment through the county and through other agencies, anger management, domestic violence, betterers. veterans intervention program, substance abuse, sex offender treatment. So it's a wide range of programming over a wide variety of areas. So we try to, with the help and involvement of our Community Corrections Advisory Board, fund as many programs as possible that meet the needs not only of the felony offenders in Kent County, but also the needs of our local circuit court probation department.
Fantastic, thank you.
Commissioner Tallon, did you want to add anything you serve on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that an email went out earlier this week from the Board of Commissioners' office that had a list of all the programs that are being funded, so you can also refer to that.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Yet again, Commissioner Tallon took the words out of my mouth.
All right, seeing none, this is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the last resolution, C. I'll call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you once again, Madam Chair. I'd like to move resolution 42. It's from the Sheriff's Department, Secondary Road Patrol Supplemental Grant Award and Appropriation.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Coleman. Questions or comments on this? All right, seeing none, this is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Julie, you're up. We're on to item nine, public comment unrelated to county agenda items. Any member of the public wishing to speak?
Andy said three minutes, or three or one?
Please come address the board. State your name and address, please.
I'll start when everyone has their card.
Okay. Are we passing it around?
Sí, necesito un traductor. Quiero hablar ustedes en español. ¿Ay? Chiste. But I just read in the paper that you're going to have a Spanish translator here.
We do.
No, no, it's a joke.
Do we have, does everyone have their card?
I could talk to you guys in Spanish, but I want to be real clear.
You're just showing off.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, has everyone got a card?
Yes, my name is Scott Atchison, and I live on the southeast side of town. I believe Commissioner Tallon is my commissioner. I've got some great news for you. I work a lot in Caledonia and Cascade, and the airport is busy. I'm seeing so many planes coming and going. It's just great. I mean, the airport's doing a great job. Then I went to the Convention and Arena Authority, and I heard some great news at their meeting. We're number one in hotel occupancy, and we're number one in room revenue rate. I mean, good job Convention and Visitor Bureau and Experience Grand Rapids. They went on and told us about all the conventions we've had and the ones we're getting. We're getting the National Sheriff's Convention here, not the State of Michigan Sheriff's, the national. That's really a good one. And then at the Convention and Arena Authority, then SMG came up and gave their report, and they're the ones who run the DeVos Place of Van Ando, more record numbers, sold-out concerts, Metallica, Justin Timberlake, Dirks Bentley, and when Kenny Chesney was here in town on Saturday and Sunday, it was just busy, busy, busy downtown. What we need is an upgrade on an information center downtown. Nobody knows what's open downtown, nobody. I mean, so what I'm suggesting is an information center downtown, and what the information center would do would produce something like this. It'd be a daily menu matrix of all the restaurants and bars and museums and everything. Everything would be done in Word and Excel, and then they'd PDF it and send it to your devices. So once it's on your device, you will magically know what's open. If you're open, you go on the list. If you're not open, you don't. Once it's in a PDF form on your devices, you'll be able to hit, and it'll bring up their website, link to their phone number. Magically, it'll make everybody know what's open downtown. During that Kenny Chesney concert, Saturday, everything was open. Sunday, nobody knew what was open. Some of them were open only at night, but not during the day. But we need an information upgrade. Even in front of the Van Ando, we need a pop-up information center when we have a concert there. You know, I was riding my scooter around, and I'm seeing people just walking all over downtown, lost, looking at their phone like this all day long. And I'm saying, put your cellphone down when you're here in Grand Rapids. You know, because we're going to provide better information than the internet GPS and cellphone, only downtown. West to Seward, east to Lafayette, what does it be? Anyways, just, I'm getting my directions mixed up. But I still think the hotel motel taxes should help support this, and I think the Downtown Development Authority should fund a state-of-the-art information center at Pearl and Monroe. That is the main downtown intersection where most pedestrian traffic and foot traffic. And the Downtown Development Authority should build it for the Convention and Visitor Bureau to operate. You know, that's what I'm just trying to say today. We need an upgrade for information, because nobody knows what's open. And thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners' evening meeting. You didn't have to get up early today.
Oh, great. I love it. My name is Julie Stefan, and I am in Plainfield Township. And I really like what Mr. Quinn said, in that every victim needs an advocate. And ultimately, every single dog that is in our shelter is a victim. Absolutely no dog woke up and said, you know what, I'm just going to take a stroll over to the shelter today. They are all there because at some place along the line, a human being failed. And my purpose in being here every single week, yay, is to advocate for those dogs who do not have anyone else to speak for them. And speaking about dog aggression today, I know you've all been waiting patiently, and specifically pit bull aggression, have you all heard someone say, "It's all in how they're raised"? I hate it. That's not true. Sometimes that's true, sometimes it's not. If two good parents have a kid, sometimes that kid is a saint, sometimes that kid is a stinker. Sometimes that kid is a criminal. There are times when two good parents can have a child, and that child just simply is going to grow up to be a criminal. Same thing with two bad parents. Sometimes two bad parents can have a kid, and that kid is a saint, ain't life grand. And sometimes that kid is a criminal. So sometimes it is in how they're raised, and sometimes it's not. So the question is, what do we do about it? If we find ourselves in a situation where a dog is expressing poor behavior, we need to ask why. And in dogs, 99% of the time, if a dog is behaving badly, it is because that dog is scared, and especially in the shelter environment. So if you have a dog in the shelter that's acting out, the question is why? Are one of their basic needs not being met? And very similar to human children, dogs' basic needs, are they hungry? Do they know that they're safe? Do they have a medical need that's not being met? Do they need more rules? Do they need more structure? Do they need more exercise? Are they neutered? Do they hate cats? There's a million reasons why. And what I'm asking is that our shelter, when they do their temperament testing, asks why. Is the problem truly that the dog was raised wrong? Could the dog be rehabilitated, or is there some basic need we can meet for that dog and bring that dog to a point where it could be adopted out with a little bit of work? As an animal welfare advocate, I expect our shelter to look at bad behavior and decide if a dog is scared or if a dog is truly beyond rehabilitation. I have been bit twice in all of my dog adventures. Would you like to guess by which kind of dog? Chihuahuas. 100% of the bites, it's chihuahuas. Anyway, thank you for your time. I will be here in two weeks, and we'll talk about what a no-kill shelter is. I think there's a big misconception that no-kill means zero-kill, and that is not true. So that is what you all have to look forward to in two weeks. As always, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other members of the public wishing to address us tonight? All right, seeing none, we are on to Commissioner Reports, item 10. Any reports tonight? Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. The Friend of the Court Advisory Committee met, we met Monday, sorry, my calendar and my brain. Just to report that continued good work by the Friend of the Court and the collaboration with the Sheriff's Department and their entire staff and others, and the Prosecutor's Office and people. The thing that was on our radar, actually, in an evening meeting almost two years ago, or two and a half years ago, this year, year-to-date, we now have three deputies who are doing the warrant follow-up. And collections have doubled over last year, year-to-date, and there are less arrests. 94% of the situations are resolved without arrest, and 384 warrants have been resolved. So again, excellent work by the sheriff, in collaboration, again, with community partners and others. The really cool thing is also that we actually did a satisfaction survey. The State Court Administrator's Office offered it to all Friend of the Courts in 83 counties. And guess what? We are the only county who said yes, to have courage to find out what people really think of us. And on the 1 to 5 Likert scale, we had a solid three across the board, which at one level is like, ah, however we know. We now know what it is, we can measure it, we can see if we're going down or up. And so to have that courage to ask the question is great for our Friend of the Court. And I'm hoping he's going to ask the State Court Administrator for some additional dollars to do some even deeper dives into that customer satisfaction and how it's really working out there. It's all disaggregated by race and gender and all that stuff. If you want that information, we can talk afterwards, or you can see the Friend of the Court.
Thank you. Commissioner Tallon.
First, want to note that those deputies that Commissioner Bukowski mentioned that are doing the great work on collections received recognition for that at the Sheriff's Award Ceremony last night. So that was pretty cool to see. I wanted to report on the Grand Rapids DDA meeting yesterday. Couple things that might be of interest. One is, was approval of a shipping container parklet, which is going to appear right out on the street here to complement all that nice furniture that's out there. You should be seeing that in a month or so, a place to sit. There's food trucks out there all the time, so a place to enjoy a little lunch. I'm amazed. I was driving by here yesterday, the day before, and there were like six or seven food trucks parked out on Ottawa there. Next thing that you can watch for is a mural that is going to be done by a Polish artist. Kind of was connected through the Sister Cities program. I'm trying to remember the name of the building, but it's the one across from Hop Cat. There's that surface parking lot there and a huge blank wall, and there's going to be a really cool mural going up there. So watch for that. And then wanted to let you know that the initial approval of the DDA budget for 2020 happened yesterday. It's an interesting process. There's kind of a draft budget, gets approved by the DDA, goes to City Commission. The City Commission approves it, then has to go back to the DDA to be approved again. So you'll hear about that from me again. $9.7 million of expenditures in the Tax Increment Fund, and $1.4 million in what we call the Non-Tax Increment Fund, which is, if you have questions about the difference, I'd be happy to talk to you about it afterward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioner Reports? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to wait until after Commissioner Morgan gives the report on the airport. Unless you're passing. I'm passing.
No, not tonight.
But we'll have a stellar report. I know you will.
What are you doing with bated breath?
So, it's May, and it's time for our semi-annual Notice of Intent to Cancel Letter from the DHHS, which we did receive at the LRE, and are continuing to work back with them on what all that will mean this time around, and where that will take the department, where that'll take the system, and where it'll take the region. But I did want to report, because some of you may be wondering about the funds that this board had approved some time ago for purposes of assisting the LRE in its deficit for 2018. You might recall that we had approved, I believe it was $1.5 million, to contribute to the Auxiliary ISF, which would help the region address that deficit. That is not going to be in play in these conversations. The board at the LRE has determined and made a motion that was approved to suspend participation and use of those funds, principally until we know what the state's intentions are and what their commitments are. It is not our intention to spend those funds or to spend local dollars in further contributions to support that. So rest assured that we're not just going to throw that $1.5 million down that tube. We'll continue to negotiate with the state aggressively, but until and unless we have a firm commitment from the state, we'd not intend to spend that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioner official reports tonight? All right, we'll move on to miscellaneous. Commissioner Melton. Can you reach it? I know. You're short.
I have very short arms.
Me too.
To go along with the rest of me. I just have just a couple of things. The recognition tonight, Adam London, I've had the pleasure and great pleasure of being on the chalkboard along with Emily Breevy, and absolutely everyone that I come across at the Health Department is knowledgeable, professional, carries themselves very, very well. When you have questions, they can answer it. They always make certain that you do have a, that they come back to you with an answer. And I'm just very, very pleased to be on that board. I also had an opportunity, I guess you can say. There were some misunderstandings about something going on in my district and a closure. And I heard from Dar Boss, from the Department of Public Works. And again, it's the first time that I've spoken with him in person. I mean, I've seen him here. And I couldn't have been more impressed with the professionalism, with the, again, the information giving, the, just the way that the whole conversation was handled, because it could have been an unpleasant one, and it was not at all. I was just most, most impressed. We have a, May is Mental Health, Mental Health Illness Month, and I am on the board at Sheldon House. We have a Break the Stigma Breakfast coming up on the 21st of May. I know that half in this group will be at a Finance Committee meeting. If the other half would be my guest at the breakfast, I would be thrilled. It's not very often that someone can see me at 6:30 in the morning. It's not real pretty. But the breakfast is at 7:30, so you don't have to be there quite that early. And I really would be thrilled for you to come and learn what this clubhouse is all about. It is, it truly is a blessing for so many people. And then last, and I'm sure there are others that want to say the same thing. It was an incredibly poignant and proud moment last week when we had this first State of the County address. And I, for one, sat there and was just absolutely so pleased with the way that Mandy, our chair, addressed the audience. The, again, the knowledge, the focus that was given. It was absolutely amazing, Mandy. You held yourself so well. It was such a pleasure. And Wayman, you took the time to point out that, yeah, we do have some things to work on. And we, but we are going to get this done. And I walked out of there really just so, so pleased and so proud to be a part of this group with such two wonderful, wonderful leaders. So I just cannot thank you enough for initiating that, and I look forward to many, many more. It was quite a moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor.
I was going to talk about the same thing. That was a wonderful event. I think me and Robert probably had more fun than anybody else. And that's okay, but yeah, I'm looking forward to next year's.
Good. Any other, Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo the comments of Commissioner Antor and Commissioner Melton, and just express my excitement to hearing the State of the County, the desire to focus on economic disparities, housing affordability, and continuing our work in lead safety. And speaking for myself, I'm excited to get to work with the rest of the Commission and Administration on that, on those items. And then on top of that, I also just felt that some congratulations were in order. I'm going to mention him for a third time, Commissioner Jim Tallon, who was appointed by Governor Whitmer to the Michigan Joint Task Force on Jail and Pretrial Incarceration Reform, to work more on the... With Commissioner Tallon's previous work on the Community Corrections Board, I can see of, think of very few other great candidates to work on reforming our criminal justice system and representing counties. So thank you very much for serving, and we're excited to see you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
I just want to say Kent County.
Got a hold of it, too.
It doesn't lock?
Nope, we'll work on that.
I think over the years, living in Kent County, I've always heard that there's certain things in businesses and retails that will never locate in Kent County for this reason or that. So it's proud to see, and you've seen the billboards across, and I'll be leaving here shortly to attend a event for the grand opening of the REI in Kent County. I don't think it's because I'm a county commissioner. I think it's because I was a co-op member since 1980. This is a wonderful asset to the community. Not only do they stand... co-op member since 1980. Uh, this is a wonderful asset to the community. Not only do they stand up for public lands, public trails, recreation, getting people off their couch and outside, but they're a partnership with local governments, parks and rec departments, and any recreational activity. So it's granted, it's in Kent County, but it's gonna have an impact on West Michigan that I think's gonna be felt by all. And I just wanted to take time to welcome them to Kent County. Uh, it's the first one in West Michigan, and, uh, I hope they're happy with, with the results.
Awesome. Commissioner Womack.
Because I have two things I'd like to cover. One, I was called by MLive today to ask if, um, there was going to be a translator here today. And I, we were, um, able to have a translator courtesy of the Hispanic Center. And I also let MLive know that, um, it's very important that we are able to translate all languages, but, um, that did not make it to the newspaper. But that is one of the things we're working on. I recall the time when I, my first day in the commission, I walked to Roger Morgan, Commissioner Morgan, and I said, "Hey, our AV system is like 1978." And, uh, he told me how we could get that changed, and we started a conversation, and Mr. Morgan helped get that conversation to the right ears. And when I walked in, a cou- a couple months later, we had an AVA system that just blew my mind. So when it comes to the translations of all languages, I, I just said, "It's time to rewind and maybe go at that the same way," you know, talking to some of the staff and the commissioners on some things we could do in an inexpensive way. And with some of the conversations I've had with some of the staff, I think we're gonna be able to bring something that the commissioners can support. I also want to thank the staff for the state of the union, I mean, the state of the county. Maybe one of you be doing the state of the union one day, I hope. Um, but the state of the county, it was just great, because as much information as we get through the year, it was great to see it all digested and congested into a format that we could just see it along with all our constituents and partners throughout the county. And I'm, I'm just happy to be part of something so positive. And, uh, I just thank the staff for all their hard work.
Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. I think, uh, my colleagues all know that Commissioner Ponstein is a member of the MAC board. He's gone already, and I'm on a couple of MAC committees. Um, MAC did a, uh, yeoman's, uh, work, I think, on the raise the age issue at the state. Put a lot of work into that in collaboration with a lot of other organizations. And one of the things I learned is that, um, MAC has a little bit of a handicap because their political action committee, MAC PAC, doesn't have very much money. They are, uh, beginning a campaign to, to try to improve on that. Um, you should be getting a letter in your, uh, or an email or a letter soon, um, asking you to consider helping out with that. I'm gonna put a envelope in your mailbox just as a reminder, and, uh, you can look forward to that mail real soon. Thanks for considering that.
Commissioner Morgan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, had a senior moment during the reports, but I, I would like to report...
Carry back to the airport.
No, no.
Just checking. Just checking.
You too. On the 911 Central Dispatch Committee, I, I, I'd just like to report that, uh, we are building our towers. We're making progress with our, our land agreements, and, uh, the system seems to be, um, on schedule for, perhaps, uh, later this year or beginning of next. One of my, uh, ongoing frustrations, um, this is an 800 platform. I currently use it at Rockford Ambulance, and, um, there seems to be a little bit of, um, pushback on getting, uh, the ambulance providers on this system. And I don't think we're gonna have a system if we don't have the ambulance providers on this platform. And we're gonna have the same problems we've had before, uh, where we're not gonna be able to communicate with the other responders. So we're trying to work through that. I think we are making some progress. Um, but it remains, uh, still a, a major frustration for me.
Any other Commissioner miscellaneous? As always, I have a list. If nobody else wants to go. All right. Um, first, I want to just thank Commissioner Steck for all his work on the LRE and the mental health system. And I just can't stress how many probably billable hours he's losing, um, working on this. It has been a super huge challenge. I, many of you know, my husband kind of works in something very peripheral, and I hear about it a lot. And it, it is literally the state going in one direction. We get a new governor, we get a new administration, and now we're going in a completely opposite direction and trying to keep it all together. And, you know, I just really want to acknowledge him, um, because it's, it's a lot of work that is very intense and, um, time-consuming and, but very important. So I want to acknowledge him for that. Um, second thing, I wanted to see if any of you noticed the, uh, miles of filing cabinets that were in the video that are no longer being used. I just want to make a plug that we don't need those, and we can continue to condense our space. Um, I, I want to also encourage you to give us feedback, positive, negative, whatever, on state of the county. These microphones, I'm thinking, where you need to push them on and push them off and not hold them. Um, the budget boot camp today, want to hear any of your feedback on that and anything else. I think we need to, we can only improve if we know what we're not doing good or what we're doing great. And so, um, I think it was positive. We had that boot camp today, and we probably need to keep, keep building on that. And I appreciate Commissioner Jones for helping put that together. Um, we are getting a new dog shelter director right on Monday, so hopefully that will be great. Um, and then two other quick things. I want to acknowledge Lori Latham tonight, today. Uh, thank her for all her work. The state of the county was, I think, great. Um, we've never done it before. She came in and basically built it from the ground up, trying to figure out what we needed to do and say, and, and what it needed to look like, and who to invite. I mean, it was just a lot, a lot of work, and she put in time on vacation, and she put in time on weekends and nights, and I just want to really acknowledge her. So thank you. And then lastly, um, Mr. Britt, we're thinking of you and the loss of your brother, and we just want to acknowledge prayers to your family. With that, I would like to call on Commissioner Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I would like to move to adjourn, subject to call the Chair to Thursday, May 23rd, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned. I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.